We'll call the Scottsboro City Council meeting Monday, July 25th. Order, invocation given by Mr. Wallens for a pledge of allegiance given by Gary Stewart.
Bless your Father. Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening, we give you thanks and praise for the opportunities that you lay out before us. We invite you here among us, if we left up your name. We thank you again for the opportunity to make conscious decisions where it's concerned the city of Scottsboro. We ask you blessings over this city, over its citizens, over its workers and its leaders. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to this land, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bellis, we give a roll call, please.
Mr. Snaff?
Here.
Mr. Wallensford?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here.
We'll go to the adoption of the agenda, go have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm making it.
Uh, second. So, any discussion? Now, we'll vote on, may I say, aye?
Aye.
The next item is the approval of previous minutes from July 11th, 2016, to have a motion to approve those minutes.
Make the motion.
Uh, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Now, we'll vote on, may I say, aye?
Aye.
Uh, second. There is no business, so we'll go to new business. The first item is consider resolution, election without opposition, present certification of election.
We have a resolution to approve, and we also have a li- a letter, uh, certifying, this candidacy for the opposition. Would you read the letter?
This is to certain filed, and only one person filed a statement of candidacy for the office of City Council, place number two, about 5:00 PM on the third Tuesday in July, preceding the 23rd day of August, 2016. The date set for an election of municipal officers in the city of Scottsboro, Alabama, and the name of such person is Patrick Stewart.
Uh, secondly, we have a resolution, uh, each one of you have a copy, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
I make the motion.
Uh, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here, no, how, and may I say, aye?
Aye.
This is our certificate of election, and I've never understood how you guys can run a little opposed and I'm running three times and had to have opposition every time. It doesn't seem fair. But this is to advise you that the City Council of Scott- the city of Scottsboro, Alabama, has therefore declared that you were duly elected to the office of place number two on the Scottsboro City Council, due to no opposition having legally qualified against you in the election to be held in and for the city of Scottsboro. Duly done on this, the 25th day of July, 2016, and this is your official certificate of election to such office. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next item is discuss the veterans' bill renovations. Christian Burton.
How are you doing?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
Well, there's some questions that everyone asked, um, on the floor, do, um, do you need any questions from starting?
Okay, I guess I'll go first. There was, I guess, several weeks ago, maybe even a long way back much, put a D-line in there about adding a second level to the dugout, to the concession stand, and I've ever since then you've looked into that, at least I have, to kind of give us some idea of what it's going to take to get it to the second level. Also understand that the project went out to bid, which was supposed to be open tomorrow, was it?
That's correct.
Which was to be postponed?
Yeah.
Okay. To the second?
To the second, that's right.
And as far as, I know we still have, in person, not that we've been said, you know, plans are in, but the office will be reviewed, but we haven't been presented anything to approve as far as the council goes, so I don't believe that we can put that project out to bid until the council has approved those plans. So I would just like to make sure that it's noted that the council needs to review the plans, and my opinion is that we need to review the plan, the plans prior to being bid out, so that we can make sure that the council has authorization on what is to be bid out. Now, there's another concern that, I don't have the copy of the email with me that you sent to the mayor to he forward this, but it's my understanding that on the plans that I saw Monday night last week, that there are six dugouts on the plans. However, four of those dugouts were left out of the budget?
That's correct. They weren't in the original budget.
Okay, they weren't, so who's responsible for that original budget?
The original budget was something that was dictated to us to, to price for the scope of work that was intended at that time.
Okay, so, but who would be the one to have given you that?
It was, it was the mayor.
Okay, alright.
So the mayor dictated that we didn't, that needed six dugouts?
Well, the, the, what's listed on that is the, the original scope of work that the mayor gave me in order to establish that budget, so. And, and there's several things since then that I think was included in that email that are things that were outside of that original scope, so we, we knew that there was, we had 20% contingency in order to cover some of those things that would have been added. I think that was, that was in that email as well.
It was, and as far as the scores boxes, if those were removed, obviously if they're at the second level, I don't think that's necessary to add scores boxes, so would that not help?
It certainly would. There would be, there would be a credit associated with not having the scorekeepers boxes, absolutely.
So that's going to help a little bit if we remove those and go to the second level. And I know the time is an issue, I think, Tony was here last week, he made a couple of comments about the, the timing possibly standing out two months, but I think if we can get what the council believes that the city needs, it's in, in the best interest of the plan, so if it, it takes another two months, unfortunately it does, but what's the estimated cost of the, the six dugouts that were left out of the budget?
Uh, $60,000. We budgeted at the age of $10,000 apiece.
Okay, so we're strong for that, for already for $60,000 because they were left out of the budget?
That's correct.
Okay, alright. I, I think that's, let's start going.
And keep in mind that I think the 20% of contingency was around $200,000.
Okay. And, but if we go to the second level, we're obviously aiming on the base.
Right.
To prepare the base, and the walls and whatnot for the second level.
That's right. The geotechnical report was done for one story building. That's correct.
Alright. I think that's the main things that I, unless someone else has something? I apologize for cutting you off, you know, for a bit, but.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, I do.
If you did the same, go ahead.
Go ahead. Um, it would require another geotechnical, um, find, I guess, to find out if we can make it to two stories.
You know, I'm not really positive about that. I think that, I, I think that they'd be able to look at their calculations from their, um, from their boards to determine if they could, um, have a higher structure on that. Now, what I, what I'm not, and it's in our specifications, I'm not sure if they would have to have deeper boards, but I can, I can give that answer back to you there.
I was also curious about the fields themselves. Are they going to have to dig up a considerable amount of the dirt that's presently there?
Well, presently, my understanding is that the outfields were significantly, um, affected by not having structured fill under them, and so there is going to be some structured fill that will come in for those outfields, so that they're level with the infields themselves. And we are, we are grading, we are regrading those, so there's going to be dirt, um, associated with.
Do we know, have any idea how deep they're going to have to dig?
Um, I don't, but I can give that answer to you.
We, I'd like, I'm, I'm understanding a little bit about it, and I'd like to see if it could help. But we had a lot of questions, and we weren't really included in a lot of this, and I think, and I know that's not your fault, I understand that, that I completely, but there's a lot of things that could go into this part or not go into this part. It could make it successful or make it a failure. The time we've got to do it here is going to be difficult, and I realize that. I really, I don't, I, I just don't think, uh, on the city's part, that we did a very good job of pre-planning, um, to give you information that, that's pertinent to the whole project, and, um, I think that we need to do it. If we can do it, we need to do it right, and we need to get it right now.
Absolutely.
Before we start letting bids, before we start letting contracts.
Well, I want you all to know that, um, from this point forward, it is our clear understanding that we need to kind of make presentations to you as progress, and we're going to work into our schedules on the remainder of this project and the other three, that, uh, so you all will know when you're going to expect a presentation from, as long as progress of that project, or this project.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harding, we appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. We do the second story, we do the dugout, we do, how much are we talking about? Is probably out of the name, before we, uh, uh.
Well, um, it's a $1.1 million budget, which also includes soft costs, which were sort of the, the survey and our professional fees. We are, the, the, I mean, the concession stand itself is coming in around $50,000 or $60,000 more than what we had budgeted because of the size of it. Um, it's increased in size. We think that the second story is going to be anywhere from 25 to another 30% on top of that, so.
110,000.
The, the concession stands are around $200,000 right now, so it'll probably be another 50 for that. And then with the added time, I, I know that some of my consultants are going to, they're going to be reviewing some of their work they've done, so we've got some professional fees that'll be incurred, so I, I'm looking at, there's probably going to be another 100, 150,000 added to that.
I guess my question, you mean, who, who's got to get that?
Can, can I ask a couple of questions? So I had, I had seen a budgetary figure of $120,000 on the, on the concession stand. Did we increase the size as I had down to the $200,000 mark? I, I thought I understand that we went from one square footage footprint to a larger one.
The original, the original concession stand was figured to be a 20-foot by 20-foot building, had $150 per foot, 800 square feet, and it's now on 1,200 per foot.
And, um... So with that, and the, and the fact that the dugouts were left out of the original plant, that pretty much eats up our contingency, right? So, kind of back to Mr. Smith's, you know, question is, you know, the question becomes is where do we, where do we conserve to, to come out in a, a fair and equitable budget, come out? Are there areas in the plant now that can be cut and come back and, and done in a later, a later day?
You know, there certainly are. There's a, a medical building, and there's a.
That was my main question, was the medical building, can that be done at a later, at a later time?
Certainly.
For instance, so, so what I would be interested to know is what is considered, from your standpoint, non-strategic, uh, buildings or structures at this time that could be maybe done at a later, at a later date? Again, this is not your fault, but I believe that the demolition of the existing site prior to having a plan in place and approved was a catastrophic mistake, and I'm not sure who was responsible for that decision or that call, but I would ask that all of these future projects, that a shovel not go in the ground until we have a firm fixed plan of what's going to go on, because right now we are in a very bad position, and this is, this is not somewhere we want to be, and again, that's not your fault, and we have to move on from, from this place, but, you know, there was a lot of concrete already out there that I, I tried to say from the get-go that I, I really still don't understand why we, why we tore up all that concrete, you know, that, uh, you know, it's hard to tear up concrete, and concrete's very expensive, you know? And I, I do want to, and, and I'll say this, I don't, and this is more for public purpose, that I don't have children that are that age, I don't have children that are participating in, you know, baseball, you know, but I don't want us to make a 25-year mistake trying to get prepared for one season, you know? So, I think that we need to be methodical about this process, I think that it needs to be a collaborative effort. I, I've talked with other members, and we don't feel like we have been involved in all, at all, in this process, and it is our responsibility to represent the citizens of Scottsboro, and when we are left out of this process, we are leaving out the representatives of the citizens. We need to know what the plan is and how we're going to pay for it, and again, I don't, I don't place that blame on you. I, I do question, the only thing I do question is designing a baseball field with no dugouts. Uh, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but we'll, we'll move on past that also. But my concern, again, is that the process being done right, and that it's a facility that we, as the city of Scottsboro, can be proud of for the next 25 to 30 years.
Well, I think that one of the things that's going to be a positive is if we don't have to really, um, if we don't have to really set a, a strict schedule of completion for that season, then we're going to allow the bidders more time to be able to realistically complete the project, because right now there is going to be some escalation in costs and overtime to try to meet that schedule.
And, and you, you won't know this, but, but do we have a contingency plan in place if the field is not ready?
Yes, and we're going to play it all the time.
Okay, so, and, and again, this is not optimal solution, but going over budget and getting it finished and then looking back and say, boy, I wish we'd have done this, I, I think that's a mistake for us, you know? So I think compromising on finish date is going to save us some overtime and, and things, and I think taking a, taking a hard look at, at what, you know, and I've said this when we were looking at these projects, wants versus needs, you know, and, you know, I think we've got some major holes in the, in the design that we're not budged for, and I think there's, there's some, there's some things that we, we have to have, and then I think, and looking just as a, a brief overview of the plans that have been supplied, I think there's some things that might be able to, to wait till a, until a later day, so. Mr. President, I would, I would recommend that we give Ms. Harding an opportunity to go back and research, uh, some of the input from the other council members and set a, a public meeting to maybe give an overview of a, an alternate design and a feasible time scale that, that we feel like we can, we can live with and, and, you know, a budget estimate on, on that, so, um, that would be my recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Harding.
Mr. President, I, uh, I may be mistaken, but did I, did I not remember that we had a committee formed on this council to be involved with the, with the, Mr. Miller was chairman of that committee, and then Mr. Stewart was on that committee?
Yes.
I guess I'd like to know what, what participation did you all have here on this?
The only participation I had was actually in the swimming pool, just as you did with the heritage center, and Mr. Wallensford to the fire department, and Gary did on Ballfield. As far as my capacity as the chairman for the recreation committee and Mr. Stewart as, as far as last year, we had no involvement whatsoever, we were never called, we were never asked for any, but outside.
Can I have asked Ben what's going on? Just project.
We, I had, we have to.
Mr. Smith, I've, I've been at meetings for over the last month where council members have asked every week, when are we going to get to see a copy of the plan? I don't care if it's a drawing on a deck and we should have, we should have been involved prior to this point. One of the things I'm, one of the major things I'm disappointed in is the fact that there's a lot of work going into this, and it's been put out to bid, which is totally outside the realm of proper protocol, uh, for this, for this project. I mean, before that project goes out to bid, it needs to be brought here and, and be approved. Now, there are requirements, and there are collaborative efforts that move us quicker through the process. Now, is it a requirement that we might be involved in every step of the way? No, it's not a requirement, but from a collaborative standpoint, it's, you would be more efficient so that we know when we get to the end that we've got a design that's going to be approved by this council. A choice has been made by someone not to involve this council in that collaborative activity, so now we're stuck where we're stuck, right? Um, and, and we're having to backtrack now, and it's going to cost us time and it's going to cost us money.
Well, and I assure you that that was not something that I did.
I, I, and I'm not placing, I'm not placing the blame on anyone really, but we learn from our mistakes, and I think it's important as we go forward that this not happen again on any of these projects, because quite frankly, we're going to have to pull from contingencies on other projects, I feel like, to be able to complete this project. And, and I don't think we're going to be completed in time, but to be able to complete it where it's an efficient installation, you know, so that money that Ms. Smith says is going to have to come from somewhere, and, you know, we're going to have to really watch our budget on these other projects, otherwise we're going to come up short.
Not only concerned, and I know where you've all come in from, and sometimes I look at things differently maybe, but if we have a committee, we have a chairman, we have a co-chairman, or, or the next in line, chairman, why can't, sorry? I, I saw the tree being, I saw the ground being worked on, and I saw all of these things, so we know what's progressing, why can't, as, to be honest with you, instead of complaining about the council not being, why can't you comment with all the people involved? And say, hey, we're starting to cut trees, what's going on? And go that route, instead of complaining at the end when it's probably too late or, because we don't have, what we estimated is, we talked about a million dollars, and wasn't enough, everybody seemed to think it was worth it, and evidently it isn't. I just think that maybe we didn't do our job this way, maybe some people didn't do it right, maybe we didn't hit, um, and leave you out of all of it.
I will say that before the first tree was cut, before the fir- first field was torn down, I was making the request for the second level, so I'm not quite sure. That I was making the request for the second level prior to the field being destroyed, for the first tree coming down. Now, I, I made this request repeatedly to the mayor and to others, okay, so.
And I guess my question to you would be, why didn't we talk about that at the next board session at the city council?
Well, the next thing we do, we have plans, and bids going down, trees going down.
That's true, so then, too late anyway, if it just didn't, in the last week?
Well, if we had been.
I, I guess my thing is, we started, is what are we going to do with this money?
Then I think things would have been a lot better.
From the beginning, and I'm concerned about that still.
And Ms. Harding, I will say that I did reach out to you over the phone a couple weeks ago, that, and I can handle Ballfield, so that was the Redcom pool, which I was on the committee for that, and the intent was to try to get a meeting set up between you and Yvonne, and Mayor, and Mark Pepperidge, and John Ickle, which y'all had that meeting, so I didn't call you back, so, but I understand you had that meeting to address the concerns with the timeframe, right?
Mr. President, I'd like to say something myself. We did have a committee that met to look at feasibility, whether we could actually build a park or not, and that was the only time this committee ever met. And as far as the drawings were concerned, I always saw were some sketches to go by, and we made that decision. A little bit, yes, I wish, I wish we had more, better drawings and a better idea of what we were going to do at that time, but I don't think, I don't think anybody involved would have dreamed that we'd gotten to the point where we did have drawings and the council was not aware of it, and again, that's not your fault, but we, um, we have not been included in this, and my person, me personally, I've asked, I asked the mayor for several months for, I was a draw. And I, when I say several months, I'm talking probably since March of this year, that I'd like to see the drawings, and that's every time that I came to this meeting. And, uh, I understand they didn't have them yet, I understand, they come, come, well, when they came, it's kind of like, well, okay, you're garbage, and that's not the council's fault, that part's not. We really need to be involved in the whole situation, and that, again, that is not your responsibility.
That's why we're here.
And that's why you're here tonight, and we appreciate you coming and talking to us about this.
What I hear is it sounds like this council is powerless, you know? It seems like maybe we could come here and this council can do anything we want to do. Yep, we didn't do anything. We have all the power, to be honest with you, we, we control them.
I, I have a question, only, uh, do you have any idea how many meetings you've had with the mayor about the project, about the baseball field project in particular?
Well, we've probably had half a dozen meetings, and we've had, you know, we've been developing the, you know, the design of each of the structures themselves. The, you know, the civil engineering is probably the largest part of the project, and that's probably something that he hasn't had for quite a while, because it was really just doing the topographic survey and then coming up with the grading, um, and, and so with that, we've had drawings of all the structures that anybody could have seen, and then we've had just working, you know, working means with, you know, questions with Yvonne and her staff as well.
That was, that was my next question was, I guess, who, who had input on the, on Ballfields?
It was the mayor, and Yvonne, and your staff, and so on. And we also, you know, from the very beginning, we were, um, it was, we were told that what we really wanted to look like was Mountainburg, and there was, you know, there were photographs of Mountainburg as a prototype for the ball, you know, for the ball fields, so that was something early on that, you know, that we were given photographs to, to model the project after that.
Any other questions, Ms. Harding?
Do you mind I understand that I need to now postpone these bids and, um, get back to you all with budget update, design update, just go through the project, and, um, and a new schedule, and have a public comment and a presentation to you all so that, um, so that we can move forward with this.
Yes. Please. And I believe we can do that in support session, if you have any. Do you have any idea what kind of timeframe it would take you to research that, those time?
I think, give us a couple of weeks to research on that, we won't really start making a bunch of big changes to that until we run that by you, so that you know exactly what effect it has on the project. I think that we're also very keenly aware that there's only so. I think that we're also very keenly aware that there's only so much money. And so, we're kind of, at this point on the Redcom, which was the next project that had a tight schedule, we need to make sure that before we come to you with the budgets that we've gathered and numbers with that, that we know exactly where the ball fields are. And just so that we know how it's affecting those other budgets.
You made me think of something. I had, I've had information, so people have told me that there's a possibility of Redcom intercepts from the area and all that, maybe two meetings or three.
We have, we've put together some budgets. One of the major things is that the cowl wall and the replacement of the roof is, we had one person that I think historically had been looking at that, that was quite expensively now involved, a second manufacturer supplier, that creates some competition. One thing that I think also is that some of our engineers have looked at, they've looked at things that are actually outside the scope, like the children's pool outside. So, there's some things within that budget that we need to make sure that it meets the scope. And that's really the next meeting we need to have to say, this is what everybody's looked at, are we within the scope of what you intended to do?
So...
But it is, it is up there, I don't know that it's the two million dollar number.
You started out in May. Any other questions, Ms. Harding? Would the fifteenth be a realistic date in August to have any more precision?
Absolutely.
In three weeks?
Yep.
If that's okay with everybody else? Any outstanding?
All right.
Thank you. Next item is consider the donation of Wilson Street property to the rescue squad. Did y'all discuss that last week?
We did. My understanding, Mr. President, was that Mr. Kenmer was going to give us some documentation on that. I don't see that included in our pack, and I do see a letter from the rescue squad.
Do you know what was requested from Mr. Kenmer? I mean, all I have is a letter from the rescue squad. I was considering one of the things.
My understanding was that it would have to, there would have to be an ordinance or something drawn up, an agreement drawn up by Mr. Kenmer to present for us to be approved in order to transfer the property. I could be mistaken on that. Mr. Kenmer, did you understand it that way?
Well, I remember he was going to do a draft for the armory for that, that's the only thing I can remember. He was going to prepare a draft for the armory just in case we move forward that and we would be, but I don't know as far as the property goes.
I remember you say we had to declare surplus for one and then we donated to, we could not condemn property, so you didn't follow all the guidelines. We donated property, we just turned it over to the rescue squad. After we committed, after we declared surplus.
So, what I understand is that we had to declare surplus before we came down?
As we do with a police car or any other thing we have no need for.
Right.
If we can do that tonight?
Okay. Motion to clear the Wilson Street property surplus.
I'll make that one.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not below on the folks side. I'll say no. Now, we'll move to consider the donation of the Wilson Street property to the rescue squad. The motion?
I'll make that one.
Second?
Second.
In the discussion, can I have someone from the rescue squad in front cover the letter?
Thank you. The letter just, you know, talks about the property and where our intent would be to deal with the property. Obviously, if it's out, we don't really need it as far as the place to move to, it's not commercial property, so we don't do that. Our intent would be to take those funds and use it on the rebuild and some modifications to the other building we were talking about on that last night.
Okay, any questions for Mr. T?
Mr. T, you do understand that if we tear this property over to you, that the rescue squad will be responsible for maintenance?
Acting, obviously, yeah.
Well, and keeping the property mowed and in proper condition up until the time of sale?
Yes. And honestly, if y'all choose to do that, I need to take that back to our organization tonight and let our guys vote on that. And I don't speak for them by myself without their vote, but it kind of came about our meeting the same night, although I would say it being a problem and, yeah, as far as maintenance on, I don't think that's an issue either. But I do want our guys to vote on it also, so everybody's on the same page.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the recommendation that we table it until the rescue squad can have a meeting and approve that they would accept the property. So, I would make most of it, we table this until the next meeting, let them have a discussion within their organization and approve the fact that they would accept the property should we need to donate it to.
I mean, we need to do that, just be on the same side of our guys. We like to keep everybody informed, keep everything on the front, not be behind anybody behind, so.
Right.
I don't see it being an issue, but we just need to make sure we get a vote.
Okay. So, I have a motion to table the donation of the Wilson Street property. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? We'll vote to table it. I'll bear say aye.
Aye.
I'll say no.
Thank you.
Next item is consider resolution on election officials for 2016 municipal election.
The following people will be appointed as officials to hold and conduct the general municipal election on August 23, 2016, and also the runoff if needed on October 4, 2016. Inspectors Kelly Good Owens, Steger Jones, Donna Frederick, Jean Greer, J.D. Stevens, and Beth Mannan. Regular officials Carolyn Robertson, Evelyn Coog, Patricia Smith, Anna Martin, Margaret Day, Mary Abernathy, Martha Gross, Kathy Henderson, Joyce Kenner, Libby Franklin, Brenda Ivey, Dolores Good Owens. Alternates will be Gail Duffy and William Jones. Absentee officials will be Martha Henshaw, Joe Forge, Rita Blair, Sue Judy Weaver, Edith Hamrick, and Inspector Johnny Ivey.
Do I have a motion to appoint the election officials for 2016 municipal election?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote, I'll say aye.
Aye.
I'll say no. Go to reports, Mr. Rosberg.
I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Congratulations to Mr. Stewart for being opposed. Probably because his campaign fund went to Chicago this past weekend. But thank Ms. Harding, although she's still here, for coming tonight and answering our I think it's important to point out that we just want these projects to be done in the proper manner and that they be something we can be proud of when we're finished with. Again, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
No, thank you all for coming tonight.
I'd just like to say to the mayor and ask a week or so ago about the parking lot that the DRA was donated across from the post office. And if you've been by today, you've seen that it was open this morning. That's thirteen parking spaces, which includes one handicap space, so the DRA has now got to open. So, I'm sure that's going to be very well utilized. The second thing is, I would just like to make note, we need to make note that several weeks ago, I asked the mayor to provide me a copy of the appraisal down on the boat that was not a fair surplus and sold. And I had yet to receive that, so I would like to make an official request tonight against that we get a copy of that appraisal.
Thank you. Just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not a vote, I'll say aye. I'll say no for adjournment. Thank you.